KFI Mo Kelly, we're live everywhere on the iHeart Radio app and we have a tremendous show for you tonight. Yes, we have a metro update next segment, but nobody died. Nobody got stabbed. I mean, to my knowledge, maybe someone's getting stabbed right now, but I don't have any information on that. But we have an update that the K line is going to be extended and they're asking for input from you and me. Oh, they asked the wrong one. I'll give them all the suggestions they could ever want. And LA City Council might be gearing up for a fight with Mayor Bass over LAPD discipline. We'll tell you about that. And LA City Council is also considering a guaranteed income for certain people. Southwest Airlines, did you know, you know, for all the computer problems they've had in recent years, did you know that they're still running Windows three point one, three point one? Do you know when Windows three point one came out? It was when Stefan was three years old. When were you born?
Eighty-eight.
Okay, yeah, ninety-two. So you're like three and a half turning four.
Yeah.
Windows three point one came out in nineteen ninety-two. And there's so much more tonight. But before we get to all of that, and that's a great show, back from his mini vacation is none other than the Toala Sharp. And it's a momentous occasion as he actually dared to go out on the water. Toala, welcome back. I see you made it back safely. Go ahead and tell the people what happened or what didn't happen.
Well, I did not get on that one boat that caught on fire.
What are you talking about?
On its way to Catalina.
What are you talking about?
No, our boat made it to Catalina and it was, in the beginning, I will say, looking at the water, I said, ah, blank, 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 blankety-blank, and then another blank.
It can be choppy going to Catalina.
Um, yes. Getting on the boat, I was tense. But I said, you know what? I see children aboard this boat, look like scouts with backpacks, ready for camping in Catalina. Uh, I saw the elderly. I saw, I don't see even a pregnant lady on the boat. I said, damn it.
Oh, so your ego and manhood took over.
Absolutely. And I was done at that point. And I said, just enjoy the ride. And I did. That water looked extremely deep.
It was. You couldn't touch the bottom.
Couldn't touch the bottom, wouldn't even dream of it. But going wasn't as bad as I thought. I just took a nice breath and just chilled. And the trip out there was actually really, really cool.
Wasn't it like thirty minutes or so?
No, 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 no. Getting out there is closer to an hour.
Closer to an hour, okay.
Yeah, closer to an hour. Getting over there is about an hour, maybe a little more than an hour. Um, it was sunny. Catalina, it was really sunny. Beautiful place to visit. You know, you visit, you walk around, it's like, uh, Melrose on the island or Santa Barbara on a island, you know, it's just one main strip of tourist-like attractions. Um, you know, if you're into snorkeling, go. If you want to get on a glass-bottomed boat, go.
Don't they have zip lining?
They have zip lining. They, I don't know if it was up and running, but they have it. I wouldn't have done it. I'd like, I wouldn't have gotten on the glass-bottomed boat. There's enough getting on a boat period. I only need the boat where the bottom is clear. Don't need to see that much ocean.
Okay.
I enjoyed my time out there. And, 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 one of the most exciting things was when we got to the docks and were ready to take off, the, I saw the very cruise ship that we will be boarding on the Labor Day Cruise.
Mm-hmm.
The actual Labor Day Cruise. I know we go to the Labor Day Cruising in, in OC.
Right.
But no, this is an actual cruise. On the boat, I saw the, uh, the actual ship.
For those who don't know, Toala has an aversion to water like I do bees. So this was a huge step for him.
Huge.
To get on a boat. This was a boat.
A boat.
And, and at next month, right around, no, thirty days from now, he'll be getting on a ship as my family and his family will be, you know, going on a short three-day cruise down to Ensenada.
I have some important follow-up questions, Mo.
Yes.
Uh, Toala, did you at any point wear a pair of water wings with any kind of superhero signage on them?
He had floaties he was wearing.
Now, now, you know, it's interesting. I did pay close attention to where, um, where the life vests were on the little skipper-type boat that we went out on getting there. It wasn't a skipper. It was, it was, it was a nice-sized boat. But, uh, I thought about that the entire time. I constantly thought to myself, if, if anything happens, like say, if this boat does, you know, hit a whale or something, a pod of orcas and they try to attack. I said to myself.
Giant shark.
It, that too. I said, make sure you get a hold of life vests for family. And if they're on enough, there are going to be people who are beaten within an inch of their life. So I make sure that we four.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You're going to make sure that you have a life jacket before the scouts and the elderly did?
You are damn right.
Oh, so you, now you know how I feel when I say I will kill everyone in the room if a bee is in the room.
I said exactly, in my mind, I said to myself, everyone in this boat will die. But so I can get to a vest. I said that to myself. I'm getting a vest. I think I stared probably at those benches more than I did the water, because that's where the vests were.
Hell with the women and children. If there's a giant octopus attacking, you know what you have to do.
I thought about the squids.
Yeah, of course you did.
I only would have been concerned if I saw Jason Statham on the boat. Other than that, I would have been fine.
It's all bad.
You know, Roy Scheider, he's dead. I don't have to worry about that. So, but if Jason Statham showed up, it's like, mm, yeah, might be a problem.
Big warning sign there.
It's like, I don't see any cameras. Well, welcome back, Toala.
Yeah, no, it was fun. And, and I really, really, and truly, truly believe that that helped out in preparation for the cruise. And, and I believe you when you say, I will feel it a lot less on the cruise ship.
Oh, yeah.
We felt, when the boat left the harbor, because going down, you know, kind of tugs out, but once it leaves, it gets past like the, uh, the little beacons or whatever, that thing takes off and you feel all of that. So.
Yeah, you won't feel any of that. You, you will have to, you will be surprised when you realize, oh, we're moving. It's almost imperceptible. And if your stateroom is not near the actual engine, you won't feel any real motion at all. You won't even be able to perceive the motion unless you are looking out, uh, a porthole or you're on deck and you can see in the sea and, and then have a reference point to see the ship moving. It's only moving like maybe twenty, twenty-five knots or so. It's not that fast.
Interesting.
Yeah. So we'll have a good time.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready.
And maybe next year, we'll, we'll take Mark and Stefan.
Absolutely not.
See, look, Mark, it's literally not as bad as you think.
Uh, well, it couldn't be. I've got quite an imagination. I, I've got, I mean, I, I like to bust on you about being afraid of deep water, but I'm petrified of deep water.
He's seen too many great movies.
How the hell can you be a lifeguard and be petrified of deep water?
Well, there were conflicts. I had to jump in to save a little girl once and I was really pissed. I had to get my hair wet. I'll just say that and move on.
It's later with Mo Kelly. KFI AM six forty. We're live everywhere on the iHeart Radio app and we have a metro line update and it's connected to, pun intended, to the Hollywood Bowl.
You're listening to Later with Mo Kelly on demand from KFI AM six forty.
Metro is taking public comments from folks like you and me. But they want you to comment on this new plan to extend the K line up through Hollywood. And if you've ever ridden, uh, the metro, the K line is, I think the, hmm, which I think is the blue line or something? I don't know. I don't know which one's the K line. Oh, the orange line. Oh, they have these proposals which would connect the K line to the D line, which I remember is the purple line on Wilshire Boulevard, and then the B line, which I knew as the red line at Hollywood and Highland. And it could include a final stop at the Hollywood Bowl. On the surface, that would be a great idea. The Hollywood Bowl having its own metro stop. That would be great. I've taken the metro to Hollywood and Highland, which is the closest metro stop. And if you've ever done it before, you walk up from the subway stop at Hollywood and Highland and you have to walk up that damn hill to get all the way to the Hollywood Bowl. If the Hollywood Bowl had its own subway stop, we wouldn't have to deal with any of that stacked parking anymore. It would be great. Assuming that you didn't get stabbed on the way, but that's a different story for a different day. But the logistics of it would be beneficial for anyone who wants to go to the Hollywood Bowl, which is a great video. Then I started reading the other unfortunate details. Check this out. The project, let's say it was, um, approved. The project is expected to break ground in twenty forty-one.
Wait, what?
Twenty forty-one. And it wouldn't be completed until twenty forty-seven to twenty forty-nine, meaning Toala, your children's children will be probably out of high school by then.
So not finished by twenty forty-one, starting.
Starting forty-one.
Starting in seventeen years. And that's if everything goes to plan and everything is on schedule. What makes a plan take seventeen years to start?
Well, I think of it this way. If you're going to provide comment in twenty twenty-four for something which starts in twenty forty-one, LA is not going to look anything like it is now. I mean, the whole world is going to change in seventeen years, much less twenty-four, twenty-five years from now. I don't know. And, and that was been the problem with the subway system since the beginning. It's always been a good twenty-five years behind schedule. And if we're talking about one or two new subway stops twenty-five years from now, sorry. I, I, I don't know what I can really offer to the discussion. There's not even a likelihood I'm going to be alive by then. And if I am, I'm going to be drooling and incontinent.
Wait, wait, wait. This plan, which isn't starting for seventeen years, is already expected to cost two point two billion dollars?
In twenty twenty-four money.
To add two more stops?
Not twenty forty-one money, but twenty twenty-four money. To add two stops underground with all the boring. I would rather they just do an above, um, ground light rail like they have running down Crenshaw.
Yeah.
And it would take you right to the Hollywood Bowl.
That seems like that would be much better.
And it'd probably be less expensive, probably get it done quicker, and the world would be a happier place. But, but if I were to give my public comment on this outside of KFI, they are having some public hearings. There is one coming up on August ninth at Dorsey High School from ten AM to twelve PM. Uh, there's going to be a hearing on Tuesday, August thirteenth from six to eight PM at the Pan Pacific Park Community Center, seventy-six hundred Beverly Boulevard. And the third hearing is going to be virtual, and that's going to be Thursday, the fifteenth from twelve PM to one thirty PM. And they list the Zoom and call-in number. So if you want to call in and give your opinions on whether this would be a positive or a negative for your grandchildren or your children's children's children, then you can do that. I mean, personally, Toala, I think your kids should be on the call or going to these meetings because they're the ones who are going to be most impacted by it. It's not going to be me. It's not going to be Stefan, and it's not going to be Mark Roner. Mark Roner will be eighty-five by then. Eighty-five!
What? Leave me out of this. What's wrong with you?
No, but you will be. I'm just saying as a point of reference.
Like, there's no point of us even discussing or looking. When, to me, this is almost like metro not keeping it real. Like, if you want to weigh in, they don't really want us to weigh in.
No. There's no one who's, who's working at metro right now, who's going to be working at metro twenty-five years from now.
This is all about your descendants. So, uh, it's like those old sci-fi stories of a multi-generational ship. You're not getting to the destination, but your kids and grandkids might.
I feel like this is the movie Passengers, and we're all going to be putting cryo sleep and maybe we'll get to use this one day.
Yeah, that's the only way.
Twenty forty-nine. I can't even tell you what's going to happen next year. I can't even tell you who's going to die on metro next week. But I was going to be the one who's going to show up at the meeting and say, uh, does anyone have any suggestions? Yes, you in the back? Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mo Kelly from KFI AM six forty.
Yes, Mr. Mo Kelly, what do you have to say? Yeah, I'd just like to recommend Kevlar vests and helmets for everyone. Thank you. Good night.
You know, this two point two four billion dollars, uh, could actually go towards maybe funding more police officers now? I think if metro wants, wants suggestions and they have a budget in mind, let's fix the metro system now.
No, 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 no. And honestly, this probably wasn't even ready for prime time, but they have to break up the negative news from people like me. So they have to put out a press release. They have to put out something saying, hey, metro is expanding. Hey, metro is going to be bringing this to you in your town and this is going to make the Hollywood Bowl more accessible. For who? When? The Hollywood Bowl may be torn down in twenty forty-nine. I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny. There's no guarantee that any venue is going to be here twenty-five years from now.
Well, here's the bright side. They're selling it the wrong way. The thing is, when it's finally finished, this big project, nobody will be getting shot with guns anymore. We'll all be using laser pistols.
No, you have to use your air quotes, lasers.
Yeah, we'll all be using ray guns.
I, I honestly, I, look, that's if it's on schedule, it'll break ground in twenty forty-one. And if it's on schedule at its completion, it'll be twenty-seven, twenty forty-seven to twenty forty-nine. They're putting in a two-year window in which it might be finished.
We'll have Star Trek transporters by then. It won't make any difference.
I hope. And, and, and the whole town will be electric by then, right? It'll just be electric vehicles.
Oh, yeah. It'll be like Logan's Run. You can just, uh, call somebody up and, and have a quickie and, and send them away on, on the electric circuit.
What are you talking about?
Logan's Run.
Quickie? What type of quickie?
The kind that's fast.
Oh, you're talking about a different type of quickie?
Yeah, yeah. Don't pretend you haven't seen Logan's Run. I won't tolerate that.
I don't know what you mean. I want you to, you know, be very specific.
We're talking about the quickie. There's a lot of people who may not have.
I, your part of this conversation is in complete bad faith and I think, I think we should go to the news.
Okay, we'll go to the news. But let me do my tease. When we come back, we'll talk about LA City Council, how they may be gearing up for a possible fight with Mayor Bass, and also the idea of guaranteed income is expanding possibly here in LA. And let's see if anyone will get behind that.
You're listening to Later with Mo Kelly on demand from KFI AM six forty.
And if you follow me on social media, at Mr. Mo Kelly on threads, or you can follow me at Later with Mo Kelly or at Mr. Mo Kelly on Instagram, um, you can find a show on Facebook. I usually get into discussions about politics, but not only presidential politics. It's, it seems like people only want to discuss presidential politics because we're so inundated with the presidential race on cable news, which most people watch disproportionately than local news. And I usually start questioning folks, like, do you even know any of the names of the people on your city council? Do you know what city council district you're in? Do you know if you live in a place in unincorporated LA which has any, a city council district responsible for it? Like me, I don't have a city council member, as I live in an unincorporated portion of LA. But the city council, mayor, LA County Board of Supervisors, those elected officials have far more impact on me and you, if you live in the LA County area, than your president. Now, it's fun to argue about presidential politics, but it doesn't really impact you as much, other than just complaining and, and arguing on social media. But here are two things that I think you should take a closer look at and will impact you or your neighbor or someone around you. And you'll be hearing about it later on for things unrelated to it. I know, it sounds convoluted. Let me straighten it up. LA City Council may be gearing up for a fight with the mayor over LAPD discipline. LA City Council returned today from its summer recess and is going to start considering trying to override Mayor Karen Bass's recent veto of a proposed ballot measure. The proposed ballot measure would change the disciplinary process for LAPD officers, including expanding the chief's powers to fire officers for misconduct. Now, this is something that I didn't know. Currently, LAPD's chief can only recommend that an officer be terminated. And the ultimate decision, final decision, is left to the Board of Rights, a three-member panel that serves as a quasi-judicial body. The new proposal would allow the chief to fire officers outright for engaging in either sexual misconduct, fraud, excessive force, or abuse on duty, and some other things. And if you read that against the backdrop of news, which is happening right now, I think Mark Roner talked about it. I know Heather Brooker talked about it, about the LAPD officer who was seen on tape punching a guy who was in handcuffs in the face. That would be directly related to this if the chief has expanded authority to be able to fire officers outright. Now, I, I can't speak to the specifics of that case, which is still going on. I can say I didn't like what I saw on the video. That's for damn sure. If a person is in handcuffs, I don't know if it's within department policy to sock someone in their jaw. I don't think so, but I'm quite sure someone will argue with me. But that's something which will impact you right where you live. The expanded powers, if it's allowed by the chief, and how that might impact law enforcement procedures. That's the first thing. Second, LA City Council, and I definitely want your thoughts on this, Mark, as, as much as you're allowed to. LA City Council is considering expanding the guaranteed income program, but it would include abuse victims and foster kids. And if you didn't know, um, there was an original program which provided one thousand dollars a month for a year to thirty-two hundred low-income households. And they're thinking about expanding that program. There was a motion today, which would, which would expand the program, which would allocate four to five million to help victims of intimate partner violence, domestic violence, and foster youth age sixteen and twenty-four. Similar programs already implemented in Oakland, Marin County, San Francisco, and Santa Clara County. If you've been paying attention, the idea of basic guaranteed income, universal income, however they want to call it, is not new. But I think it will be the future everywhere if we think about this from the standpoint of automation, if we think about this from the standpoint of loss of jobs and how there will be fewer and fewer jobs for people, especially on the minimum wage level, just ten and fifteen years from now.
We did, uh, a story at seven thirty by Michael Monks, uh, if you'd like me to replay that.
Please.
Here we go.
Thirty-two hundred families living on around fifteen grand a year were given a thousand bucks a month for twelve months. University of Pennsylvania researcher Dr. Amy Castro says the program was life-changing for parents.
They reinvested that time into their children's well-being through enrichment activities, through spending time with their kids, through being able to, to set predictable bedtimes. If anyone's a parent, you know why that's important.
City Councilman Karen Price says he wants LA to do the program again. He and Councilman Hugo Soto Martinez have pledged a million dollars each from their office funds to kickstart it. In downtown LA, Michael Monks, KFI News.
So, Mo, I don't know how much of this kind of thing that you've read about, but I read about it pretty frequently.
I do too.
And the main opposition seems to be that people have an innate, right down to their DNA hatred of other people getting, quote, free stuff. But every single time I read about how this has been carried out in the real world with the UBI, it's been a success. Do you know differently than that?
No, it has always been a success. But I also know, if you follow the trajectory of capitalism, if you follow the trajectory of the amount of people who are unable to, um, um, afford to live in various cities around the country, the unaffordability, the unavailability of housing, this is an inevitability, I would say, for most cities, not in the immediate future, I say twenty, thirty years out.
Yeah, it could be, because more and more people are going to be put out of work, especially if AI keeps going the way it looks as if it's going to go.
Right. That's exactly where I was going next.
And those people aren't just going to go wander off into the snow and die for the convenience of everybody else.
And this circles back to our conversation about homelessness, things that we don't want to see homelessness. And I'm saying like, mm, this is about humans' real lives and the real consequences of how we have what I called, and you complimented me for it, I couldn't believe it, unfettered capitalism.
Did I?
Yes, you did.
Completely forgotten about that. I think it's possible you're making that up.
No, no, no. Seriously, these are the consequences of having, uh, no boundaries and parameters, constraints on these things that we love about capitalism. Like, we complain about how, um, out of control rent may be. We may complain about how high groceries are, but someone is setting those prices and someone is allowed to set those prices because it's capitalism and grocery's going to try to make as much money as they can. Um, I would say gas station owners are going to make as much money as they can. And it all feeds into this equation of being, being unaffordable to live in this city or any other city. I say all that to say, if you don't like UBI's now, just wait. They're going to be everywhere. And if you look at the history, they will also be successful.
Yeah, let's bring this back to, I, I made an analogy to, uh, the old grade school science theory of conservation of energy. You remember that? And my, my point of that is that stuff has to go someplace. You can't wish or will something out of existence because you don't like it, you don't want to see it, it offends you. So there are going to be people who are poor, who are homeless, who need, uh, you know, food and shelter, and they don't just go away because you don't want to deal with them.
Wait a minute, is that like the first law of thermodynamics? I can't remember. Okay, I wasn't sure.
It's in that territory.
Okay. All right. Because what's the second law? Is that entropy?
I don't remember.
I can't remember. It was forty years ago.
But it's like the theory of conservation of energy. It goes someplace.
Yeah.
It doesn't just phase out of existence because you happen to be done with it. Something's got to be done with it.
I don't think people take a big-picture look at it and realize there's a reason why gas only cost fifteen cents in the nineteen seventies and now it's four, five dollars a gallon. We ain't ever going back to fifteen cents. And twenty, thirty, and the United States has been relatively lucky compared to Europe and other places around the world with the cost of gas.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Talking about, they, when I was in Spain in the early two thousands, they were paying seven, eight dollars back then.
Exactly. We don't know how good we have it.
It's not ever going back to fifteen cents. And, and when I, my parents bought their house in Harbor City in nineteen seventy-five for, it was fifty-four thousand dollars for a four-bedroom house. It's not going back to that. And you know what? It's probably going to be three point five million forty years from now. Where do you think we'll be? And if we're complaining about the, 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 the minimum wage for fast food workers today, assuming that there is a minimum wage for fast food workers thirty years from now, do you think it's going to be twenty dollars an hour or forty dollars an hour?
Oh, you're asking me?
Well, it's, it's semi-rhetorical.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it never moves back in the other direction.
No, and meanwhile, nobody ever asks about the millions, the tens of millions that the CEOs make. Those make a difference. You, as a consumer, are paying those massive salaries.
But we are so angry at our quote-unquote politicians for not keeping gas low, for not keeping the cost of milk low. It's like, you're not paying attention where all this is going. It will forever go up.
Well, right. And whether it's gas or milk, you have to look at the people who control it. And you have to make sure that you're angry at the right people. So talking about milk, what is it, like five, six, seven, uh, giant corporations control eighty percent of the groceries we buy?
Yeah.
Look to them. They're, they're the ones who are price gouging.
Not unlike gas.
Uh-huh.
There's a commonality there, a similarity.
Hmm, you don't say.
It's later with Mo Kelly. We're going to talk about Southwest Airlines. They're still in the year nineteen ninety-eight. We'll tell you what we mean in just a moment.
You're listening to Later with Mo Kelly on demand from KFI AM six forty.
And I'm the only one? I'm the only one who realizes? I'm the only one, because it seems like I'm the only one who's talking about this. There's the story behind the story. Here is the story that I'll tell you what's behind the story. The story is Southwest Airlines, they're receiving, I guess, some sort of kudos or credit because they're one of the few airlines which was not affected for that CrowdStrike Microsoft outage. They received credit for it. It's like, no, we're Southwest. We didn't have to deal with that. The reason why is the story. We're not even the story behind the story yet. This is also part of the story. Southwest Airlines is still using Windows three point one, which means that it never received the software patch update, which basically fried every other airlines. If you're not aware, your computer should be on Windows eleven right now. Or if you work at iHeart, it's Windows eight, but that's another story. Won't get into that. Windows three point one. Windows three point one came out in nineteen ninety-eight. Remember how we were talking about the Phantom Menace? How we had the twenty-five-year anniversary of that movie? It's even before that. Nineteen ninety-eight, Bill Clinton was still president. Nineteen ninety-eight. No one was, was even thinking about George Bush or Al Gore at that point. We weren't even into the presidential election season. Now, here's the story behind the story. And if you've been listening to Later with Mo Kelly, we reported on the many issues of Southwest Airlines in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Do you remember back in twenty twenty-three, and this is the story behind the story, how Southwest Airlines agreed to a hundred and forty million dollar fine for their travel disruptions during the holidays in twenty twenty-two? Do you remember that? Do you remember why they had the travel disruptions? They called it a brief outage, a software issue. Do you remember that? I do. Software issue. Windows three point one. Do you- Do you remember in May of this year, how 3,000 US flights were canceled as a part of a global computer outrage, out, outage? Southwest Airlines was the one disproportionately impacted. Windows 3.1. Do you know why people don't use Windows 3.1 anymore? It is prehistoric. It is unable to handle the complicated computational processes needed to manage. You couldn't run your iPhone. You couldn't run a basic, um, um, smartphone today on Windows 3.1 computing power. You can't do anything with it. Now, I know there's an argument saying that it is less susceptible to certain viruses because they're targeting, um, later versions of Windows. I get all that. But the point is, the reason why we're using more modern computational technology is it is more suited for the complex processes that we're requiring of it. You couldn't use 3.1 in this studio. There's literally nothing in the studio which would work on Windows 3.1. I couldn't even get Mark Roner to do the news on Windows 3.1. I'm serious. It, it, there's nothing in that studio which would allow him to use Windows 3.1.
Don't jinx me, man. There's, there's enough that goes wrong on any given day to begin with.
No, there is, but it's still better than Windows 3.1. You would never put Windows 3.1 in any important piece of equipment. And to think that an airlines even today is running software from last century, I'm not exaggerating. Last century.
I have this theory that if you and I and normal people had any real idea of just to what degree the things we rely on in civilization are held together with like duct tape and spit, we'd lose our minds.
How is it if you are the CEO of Southwest Airlines? The first time you have an outage that you don't say, hey, why don't we set aside a couple million and update our computer systems to at least Windows 98, at least Windows 98? Because I understand, I know a little salt about computing. Windows 98 is a pretty damn stable operating system.
And it's only 26 years old.
Only 26 years old. Okay. But it's still better than Windows 3.1. And it's still better than Windows 95. But you're sitting with Windows 3.1 and we wonder what would happen if something tragic occurred? And we'd have another congressional hearing and we'd have the president of Southwest Airlines and we have Congress saying, are you ready to give us your, your, your resignation in these five minutes that we're talking? As opposed to look, looking at the obvious and saying, there's no way in hell that we can have a major airlines continue to function on Windows 3.1. Because there's no other place in our technological society would Windows 3.1 be sufficient.
That's just barely above the technology of one of those old TV pong games.
Barely. When you say Windows 3.1, you're talking about some of the earliest versions ever of Windows, ever.
Is that the one with Clippy?
Yes. No, 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 no. Clippy was still on there.
Okay, thank you.
Cause Windows, uh, I think Windows 98 had Clippy as well. So definitely was on Windows 3.1. And we wondered, and that's alongside what we know about Boeing and their issues. So you combine Boeing and Southwest is mostly Boeing planes. And you combine that with the knowledge that they only have Windows 3.1. It is amazing that we've not had more air disasters. It is amazing to me. It's later with Mo Kelly. KFI AM 640. We are live everywhere on the iHeart radio app.
If you didn't like that opinion, keep listening. We've got a few more.
KFI.
And KOST HD2.
Los Angeles, Orange County.
Live everywhere on the iHeart radio app.